Good evening and welcome to the City Council Conference of Tuesday, March 11th, 2025. One item on the agenda, AIM Norman Comprehensive Plan Update, Housing and Land Use Plan.
All right, great. Well, thanks. It's a pleasure to be back here again. We're going to start off with the land use plan and then we'll go into the housing plan, master plan. Again, excited to be back here. Just always, always like to start off with this slide and a little bit of an update of where we are. We're now at over 20,000, 23,000 visits on the website. We had over 3,400 responses on our polling questions. And you can see all the events and interactions we had through, through other events. So I always like to start off with that piece of it. What we're going to go over here tonight is a little bit of a repeat of what we shared in December, mostly because we haven't had seismic changes since December. It's pretty much stayed pretty constant. We have a few things, some adjustments and refinements that have been made over the last three months. But for the most part, there hasn't been any significant changes in the character areas or the land use designations in the number and boundaries and so forth. So just wanted to reemphasize this again. We talked about this the last time. The lake and the aquifer obviously have come up quite a bit throughout this process. And just reemphasizing that this plan continues to try to make sure that those areas are protected as we kind of continue to manage the growth that we experience. And just making sure that in the next generation can call this the great home that they're finding it today. We have the 10 development principles. This is something that I think now probably for, we're probably coming up on a year since we established these. So these are the 10 that have been guiding us throughout this process. Not the first time you've seen these, so I'm not going to read through these again to you. But as we talked about in December, we have, this is a different approach to the land use planning than what you have in your current plan today. We have two maps really that are working together. There's the character area map, which kind of focuses on how the built environment all fits together. And then there's the land use map, which, what is the land uses that we want to see within a specific area? So it's kind of high level down to much more specific. On the character area map, again, how the built environment fits together. The city has been divided into seven character areas that share common challenges and opportunities. And each of those character areas has formulated policies for new development tailored to the city's unique development areas. So not only just new development, but how we would potentially be handling some redevelopment in some of those areas too. On the land use map, on the other, kind of the second piece of this, again, this is the more specific aspect. It identifies how land in specific areas of the city will be used. So again, drilling down to more specific. So several of the AIM Norman Development Principles supported more flexible land use approach that encourages a mix of uses and focuses on the intensity of those uses rather than just one specific use in an area. So it's much, much less a siloed approach. So we, we just want to make sure that this added flexibility will mean probably fewer plan amendments that you all will be seeing over the next, you know, once this is, moves forward, which we hope does actually kind of create more certainty in the process for, for everybody. When we think about the distribution of the land uses in the AIM Norm, it was informed by our existing land use patterns, adjacencies, infrastructure, transportation, environmental impacts. We had a lot of input from, that was the great part about doing it as the AIM Norman process is there's a really good amount of input from all the other departments and systems that make up your community. But also, we had a great working group from our committee that really drilled down very specifically and looked at this and gave us some very good feedback to get us to where we are today on that land use plan. So that's kind of, I think most of those slides were kind of a repeat from December. We had maybe adjusted a few things. What we thought might be helpful is to go into a few of the kind of talking points or questions that we're maybe hearing and share some of the answers that, that are related to those. So just some of the points of discussion. Are we planning to meet the, the demand that we see? So boy, over a year ago now, we established that probably by 2045, we would be needing to plan for a population of over 185,000. And that really is based on trend, but really on a understanding that you wouldn't continue maybe the same annual growth rate as your base gets bigger. So, but trying to continue to, to look at that trend. To accommodate this population, we'll need to add about 23,000 units to the market. And the plan identifies new growth and infill that will accommodate nearly two times that. So there's sometimes, there's some questions about, well, why do you do that? Why do you, why do you add that? Because sitting here today, we can't predict what every, everybody, every individual in the community is going to want to do with their property or where the market might go. So we need to provide some flexibility within the planning process. So that's, that's factored in at one and a half to, to kind of two times the demand. So we have that kind of ability to, to have some flexibility. One of the other questions that we're hearing sometimes is people look at the map and they go, we don't see as much commercial land use on this map. What's the deal with that? Well, this goes back a little bit to what we were talking about earlier. And throughout, through the process, we, what we heard from residents is they desired areas that offered easier access to services and jobs and entertainment, that mixing of uses and less separation of those uses. So what does that mean? That means that in response, the land use plan allows that more mixing with similar intensities. So many of the land use districts include a residential aspect to it, or excuse me, include a commercial aspect to it. So you might be able to have a commercial, but it's going to be at that same level or intensity. So for example, in your low urban area, some commercial is going to be allowed in there. Are you going to be able to have a super center? No, because that wouldn't match that level of intensity. But some sort of commercial services, the Midway Deli, I think is the one that a lot of people often like to reference, is those sorts of uses would be allowed within that, that residential, that low urban residential district, urban low, excuse me. So again, this will, this is part of the reason why we'll be seeing fewer plan amendments. You won't have to come in and do a plan amendment to be allowed, to be able to do something like a Midway Deli in that urban low district. What does the urban reserve land use category do or what does that mean? So this is an area where new development will be discouraged until existing city water, sewer, storm, water, transportation, infrastructure, until it can serve that area without skipping areas to the west. So it does not mean that we can skip everything to the west and just jump here with that infrastructure services. It really tries to put policies and guidelines in place that will encourage that incremental growth and really discourage development in this area. For this reason, it is unlikely that this area will develop during the life of, of the plan. Okay, so how then are we protecting our water resources and rural Norman? These are another couple kind of questions we, we're frequently hearing. The land use master plan policy strives to really discourage development in environmentally sensitive areas and that encourages development in or adjacent to existing developed areas. So again, that idea that we should be where we can potentially infilling or redeveloping within, within existing Norman or within the kind of existing urban serviced area. And then where, and those other places growing incrementally. The stormwater master plan specifically recommends, has recommendations regarding buffering, treating runoff, education, all of these things are also laid out. And this is where these, this is great opportunity for these plans to all be working together. Policies within the land use plan highlight the importance of maintaining East Norman's rural character. And for example, the policies for areas east of 48th Avenue strive to protect natural resources and land until 2045 and beyond. So, and in that time, it will potentially be looking at another update to, to the plan. So the other question probably frequently heard is why is the turnpike shown on, on this map still? So AIM Norman does not endorse or influence the development and alignment of the proposed turnpike planned either to the east or to the north by OTA. For this reason, it came to the decision that we really had to plan for all scenarios since this plan really can't influence it, including the potential construction of the turnpike. So that had to be one of the scenarios. It was kind of the conclusion that, that folks came to. Okay, how does the plan address increasing density in existing parts of Norman? So the policies within the plan encourage development that reflects the character and desires of existing neighborhoods. This includes recommendations that will guide development of, of the updated zoning code, including building height and scale. The plan specifically calls for the update or development of neighborhood and special area plans that will reflect the desires of the residents in the neighborhoods and the, in those, the residents of those neighborhoods and getting their input at the next level. So finally, what's this mean for my property if I live here in Norman, right? The policies within the land use plan highlight the importance of maintaining, oh, excuse me. I don't, I think I did a copy paste here and didn't update this. So the, what does this mean for my property? It really doesn't mean anything. If you're not going to be changing your zoning on your property, it's not, it's not going to change anything about your personal property. When you come in, if you choose to come in and, and change the zoning or use on your property, then you're going to have to follow the policies and the guidelines within this plan. Questions on that maybe before we transition to the housing study? Go back since the text doesn't, I'll write on that one. Overwhelmed, everybody. I'm going to slide this over. Hand it over to Charlie. We'll jump into housing then.
I'm Charlie Cowell, RDG. I was a staff consultant helping lead the housing subcommittee team as we worked through the housing strategy plan, actually approved by the subcommittee last November. So it's been a, a little bit since we, we talked about it. So it'll be a little refresher for me as well, since I've been helping with other portions of the plan. So the housing strategy plan, master plan portion of AIM Norman, this was focusing really on policy and strategies. We had some deep conversation with the subcommittee right off the bat on if we were talking about land use locations, where housing should go. And that was not the purpose of this plan or this subcommittee. It was going to be heavily referencing the land use plan, which that the Amy had just talked about as far as where certain densities or urban high, medium, low go, which would inform housing. This is really just focusing on the policies and strategies for meeting the gaps that we have in the community related to housing and how we get there. So it provides context to our needs in the future. Amy mentioned 23,000 or so-ish units we're looking for. That's a total number. This plan goes into detail. What is that, what are those, those 23,000 made up of? There's going to be a rental need for rental units, a need for ownership units, and a need at different price points and attainability levels, whether that's, I mentioned price, whether that's design types like universal design for aging in place. Maybe it's rehab needs that are needed in certain existing housing stocks. So it's, it gets into all the details of that, which we'll talk a little bit about here today. And then it identifies approaches to, to, to fill that gap. So whether that's policy, whether that's investment, whether that's certain other actions like zoning and subdivision regulations that we need to update that are missing or getting in the way, it gets into all that detail. So there's a few things the action strategy can do. It really sets that blueprint for new policy and programs going forward. It has a lot of recommendations and case studies of examples that have been used in similar communities or other communities. But it sets the stage for then starting to move immediately forward with those policies and programs. Stimulates conversation. We had a diverse group on our subcommittee with people of, of a lot of different backgrounds in the housing market. And so we were able to actually, in our, some of our committees educate each other. And so the document hopefully is an educational tool for realtors, for builders and developers, for anyone that is, is in the housing market to understand what's going on and what directions are needed to move forward, which is kind of the third bullet point there. Show, show builders and developers the demand that's out there and the price points we need. And then other partners we need to get involved as well. It can't be just the city. It can't be just the builders. There's a lot of people, Habitat, nonprofits, housing authority, others that, that need to be involved. So a few reminders, the goals are, are very similar in here to, to how Amy has described them in, in the comprehensive plan. They're, they provide more specific direction though, in this housing strategy plan and the development principles. We did have some community engagement with this plan as well through some of the polling that was done with the comprehensive plan. We were able to gather, gather some input from the community. We did listening sessions as well with stakeholders. And then elaborated on those items in here. So let's jump into it. There's five goals. We limited it to five goals because there was a ton of ideas on the table to move forward. And, and we know we have limited resources, not just financially, but, but staff hours, your, your time. So we narrowed it down to five overarching goals to really focus on and hopefully capture the biggest ideas we heard from, from the input process and also the gaps. Being able to fill gaps. So number one, this was right off the bat, modernized development regulations to achieve consistency, efficiency and outcomes. It really came down and came up in every single meeting we had. It, it flushes into every other goal in the housing strategy plan. So it is the overarching goal of the plan. So what does that mean? The couple, couple strategies that, that the plan suggests recommends to do that. Number one, rewrite zoning and subdivision ordinances. Pretty straightforward. That's, that's number one. Doing that process will be able to take actually quite a few of the other strategies in the plan into action immediately. Just by updating the zoning and subdivision, we can achieve a lot of the other strategies in, in the plan itself. And there are more details on some specific items to make sure to touch on in that zoning update whether that's taking a look at lot sizes, making sure our ADU, we know we have ADU allowances, making sure those are right and are working, parking, looking at parking. And there's a number of other things in there that it recommends to take a look at in that update. And then kind of secondly, making sure that, that, that update and our existing processes are coordinated across department review so that we're all speaking the same language. So when someone comes in to do a project, they're not getting told one thing by one department, one thing by the other. And hopefully able to streamline it a little bit better with that new code. Cause we know right now the code's kind of stacked and a little confused, can be, can be confusing even with, to people that use it every day. So, well, so goal two of five, this is really all about variety, different types of housing. We know we need ownership. We know we need rental. But even within the ownership and rental, we need different types of, of housing models as well. Whether that's attached, walkout patio style, whether that's more mixed use styles that, that cater to that preferences or needs and at different densities, different locations. So this really starts to put a little bit more, dare I say, character to the land use map. Kind of the types of housing that might, we might want to consider are needed in the UM or the UL, the UI. So a couple of strategies, the, the plan details out here. One is create acceptable building plans of housing typologies and share some type specific resources. That sounds like a mouthful. It's probably really confusing to you, but the images in the plan share too. So what this is, is basically seeking opportunities with the building community to create kind of prototype plans that, that would be acceptable to match certain housing needs. So it might be a, a type of product that's not in Norman today. There's a reason it's not here probably. No one wants to be the first one to take the risk to do it. So by showing what's possible, it cannot just kind of illustrate some examples, but also streamline up approvals. If everyone kind of agrees on these, these acceptable plans, it can make the kind of the approval process a little more streamlined with the zoning updates. B here, offer mixed use reuse development incentives. That is pretty much just as it sounds. You do probably do that to some extent today, but this is, gets more detailed on making sure that we're tying incentives to those specific gaps that we identified in the plan.
I appreciate the next types of housing. And when it comes to owners and renters, is there a thought like even diversity in types of ownership, like a community land trust?
Yeah, yeah, for sure. We talked a lot about a lot of different models, ownership entered. But yes, it would be affordable, whether that's tied to affordability targets, whether it's tied to the actual design, universal design or the set, the partnership setup of the unit. Yep, I'll include that too.
And also if we wanted to incentivize somebody to develop the community land trust, that could be in that B, offer mixed reuse redevelopment incentives.
Yeah. So one of the first steps for this B one is to determine what those criteria, approval criteria are. So that would be the kind of first step to implementing this. What are our criteria that we want to use to, to grant, or to implement these incentives? And maybe, yeah, maybe it's things, that's, that's one of the check marks. And, and then there, some cities might do different levels of like, if you do the, if you're meeting these things, then you get this level of incentive. If you meet these things, you get another level, things like that, yeah.
Thank you.
And they don't, it doesn't have to be just financial incentives too. It could be built into the zoning. So you do certain things. When you do that update, it could be incentives for, if you provide this, then you get to do some exceptions here in the zoning here or there, or get to do.
Variances.
Density buffs.
Sort of, yeah, yeah. Or it could be processes. You do this, you don't have to go to, you know, get the full approval. Staff can approve it. And that, that's another method too, so. Which kind of leads, actually, that question kind of leads into goal three, increase attainable, accessible and quality housing options for all people. This one really folds into a lot of the strategies as well. We heard a lot about costs. We heard a lot about attainability. You notice the word affordability is not here because that means something different to every, everybody. So purposely don't talk, don't use that word in the, in the goal. But we're talking about price points. We're talking about livability, quality of life, those sorts of things. So our priority targets under this goal are lower income, mobility limited, those that might need some supportive services, whether that's in a, in-home supportive services or more of assistive living type setting, and those experiencing homelessness. Priority locations, these might be, this goal might be applicable to areas we target around transit routes, active transportation, bike and pedestrian routes, near schools, near healthcare facilities. So when we think about implementation of these strategies, these might be target locations that we have as criteria for being able to use these strategies, which is kind of point A here, enacting those, those target metric requirements for, for achieving this gap, which then could be, once those metrics are determined, how, how we can use our affordable housing development or maintaining that a housing trust fund to then divvy up those dollars based, based on those metrics. And then along, education is very important along with this as well. So not just for the general public, actually probably more targeted to the actual owners, property owners and, and developers. An example that's used in the, in the, the plan is the voucher program. There's a lot of misconceptions on how that's used and, and fear even from rental landlords on, on accepting them because of different stigmas. So we actually have a good example in there from Lawrence, Kansas, where they, they used an incentive program that basically said, we'll cover the risk. You know, if you accept vouchers, we'll, you get kind of a guarantee if you get a damage to the property. If you get missed payments or whatever, we'll cover the costs. And they had a certain amount for a certain number of years. At least last year, when I talked to them, they never had to pay out yet on it. So it's, it's just that little bit of risk reduction, that kind of assurance that all that was needed. Goal four, enhance and promote infill opportunities in existing neighborhoods. So this is really focusing on our core areas in, in Norman, our existing housing stock and making sure that we're not ignoring what we have built already. Cause that is our most, most affordable housing stock that we'll have. Strategy, pretty straightforward, increase rehab and redevelopment and sound and programs for appropriate sites. So again, focusing on the areas of most need and, and being able to be really focused with the limited resources we have. You do some of this already. There's examples of this all over other cities too. And that's going to require some more public-private partnerships as we know our, our resources are, are limited. Even unknowns at the federal level on what we're going to have in the future. So it's going to be extremely important to make sure we're, we're getting those public-private partnerships to help assist on rehab, renovation, target areas, that sort of thing. And lastly, goal five, it's very important that we make sure all of these strategies are clear, understandable and reasonable of, in their, the way they're applied and, and the procedures going, going through them. A few items here, one, we need to make sure people know about it. So there's a ton of resources out there. You can go to different sites and, and find a list. But, but creating some sort of central center where that, everything can, can be together would be great. And then obviously advertising and marketing that and make sure people know about it. And then C, simplify process. I'm not saying that the first cut out, these are going to be really complicated, but we need to make sure they're simple. It can be very discouraging even for someone that knows what they're doing to kind of just have to keep submitting things or have to keep, they're not, can't figure out the process. And now think of someone that's not involved in the housing market, doesn't know what they're doing, trying to use a program. It's, it's very discouraging. So we need to make sure it's simple, straightforward and we can make adjustments as we move along.
And you see this as a municipal function or a county function?
Yeah. I would, I would say the, the lead on the, well, it depends who's leading the strategy, I should say. But I would say the municipal function would be maybe taking the lead on the, the central curated resource center, finding a partnership to create that and then manage it. But hopefully with the other partners, be able to populate with them, with all the programs.
Thinking of partners as, as a closer definition, are we talking home builders?
For sure, yeah. Home Builder Association, Realtors, University, nonprofits, housing authority. There's others we talked to that, there's a whole list in the, in the, in the plan. Yeah, yeah. So that is big picture, five goals, maybe double, double, maybe triple that and some strategies to, to get started. The strategy plan does outline a little more detail on who each of these strategies we want to involve, the target housing types we're targeting with each strategy, the target price points we're targeting with each strategy and how it relates to the, the land use plan as well. Happy to answer any, any questions.
Is there any insight into the strategies, like which might be cost strategies and some which would be no cost strategies?
Yeah, actually, that is another thing that's in our tables as well as funding options. And which ones, yep. So if there's, if it's not a cost type strategy, then it's kind of more of a policy.
It's low hanging fruit.
And that, all the old document open here is like a reference.
Any comments from guys? Yes, sir.
All right. So now can we go back to the urban reserve?
Sure.
I wanted to get the full presentation before talking about that.
Is that this map? Any of these maps?
Yeah, a couple more.
Oh, there we go.
Yep.
All right. So can you explain the, kind of the reasoning? Behind the urban reserve and maybe elaborate on, on what its purpose is?
So the, the idea here is that we don't see development happening in this area in the life of the plan. But with, as infrastructure moves closer to that area, that area could potentially develop beyond the life of this plan. uh, that area could potentially develop beyond the life of this plan. So we want to make sure that as long as possible, kind of the character and um and what's out there right now is preserved and maintained. Um, because really, it, it, it really kind of maybe is the, the ultimate boundary um for the community as, as we look beyond the life of this plan. Um, so there was a lot of discussion around infrastructure along Forty-Eighth Street and that kind of hard boundary and how that, it, it really, as we put that infrastructure in, does it make sense not to say we would develop on the other side of a street where we have infrastructure in?
So it's anticipating the next plan?
Right. I think that's, yeah, that's probably good.
So would that make it appropriate to be in this plan?
Um, I think it does because um it's a way of saying we, we want to protect this area um in, in, um, and at least within the life of this plan.
So if our intent is to protect it, then we should protect it, not give uh not encourage its uh, well, its, its development. Now, now what it does is it does emphasize incremental rather than leaping forward, leaping past the next road or the next. Um, but it also provides a Trojan horse to develop an area that we're not ready to have developed yet, uh, nor do we really want to have it developed yet because of uh the impact of lake and uh if we kind of take a step back and look at the planning, like what is this land use plan intended to be? Um, well, the null situation is that we have no plan at all, anybody can just build anything anywhere. So by its very nature, this land use plan is intended to be restrictive. So why are we making it less restrictive by designating it an area for incremental growth?
Actually, uh, it's actually more restrictive in that area under this plan because it's requiring a thirty acre minimum lot size. And as you go east of that area, you're back to your traditional pattern that you have now.
So I want to preserve that because that preserves the area and take out the language that anticipates the next plan or the next uh twenty years into the future. Focus on the preservation, remove all the language that uh says anything about incremental growth, future growth and just do what this is intended to, to do. Preserve the area, set out the, uh, those restrictions. If we find that we need that area for development, then they can land use modification. And I, you did say that uh you're trying to avoid that situation. That's an irrational thing to try to avoid because that's going to happen no matter what. Uh, not only is that going to happen no matter what, it's going to happen even if they're putting something in someplace that's zoned for that, they could be requesting a PUD because most people are requesting PUDs nowadays to do, you know, slight variations and uh, so that's on the rezoning part, but um, you know, with the land use, we have two such, two scenarios that we could be looking at, we could either make this uh make it easier to develop or make, make it harder. If we make it easier and we get more development in an area that we didn't want it, we can't take that back. If we make it harder, then the consequence is that they just request a a change to the land use plan. That's something we can handle, we can't handle being wrong in the other direction. But you know, going back to the intent of this, uh, this little strip, then let's pursue that intent of preserving the, uh, that strip with language that focuses on the preservation and, you know, don't need to be uh including language that envisions future growth and future uh encouragement into that, that sensitive area.
Councilor Nash's point, if pick a street, um, Sixtieth, Seventy Second, Eighty Fourth, if anything east of wherever street you pick wasn't in the city limits and so the city couldn't, wouldn't run water, sewer, anything to that, would that slow the development more than the urban restricted or rural restricted? Or reserve or that you are in, or, or I'm sorry.
Yeah, if I'm understanding your uh question correctly, um, I would say yes and no. I would say um, yes from like maybe um the, the amount that you would put on a septic system of a development or a package system, but it wouldn't necessarily limit the development of additional acreages or small developments that can all be on a, on a package system. So it wouldn't necessarily limit the, that.
But it would limit like large development stuff if you didn't have water or sewer?
Traditionally, yeah, because they would want to be on a, a, on a city system to do those things, but yeah, I mean, there's also there's always new things that are, of how they can handle those, those um needs infrastructure.
Add some precision to that, the neighborhoods that you're thinking of that are in like the uh, like a seventh of an acre, a lot would probably be unrealistic out there, but there are neighborhoods out there beyond city water that uh all have wells on with uh typical neighborhood might have like seventeen to twenty homes on it. Those kinds of neighborhoods would still be able to develop and still would.
But we're not building, like, we wouldn't be able to build Brookhaven out there or, you know, pick a neighborhood, you know, just a, a fairly dense, single-family home.
Somebody could, it'd be kind of stupid. Somebody should actually propose that on Forty-Eighth, the whole bunch of other apartments and high-density apartments and the metrics of it, sheer water that it would take is Highway Nine and Forty-Eighth, so it wasn't going to be on city water. The sewage issue would probably be their first uh problem. Would probably be the biggest problem. A lot of humans make a lot of waste and you can only get the ground to absorb so much at a time.
Um, what's the, what's the density requirement in that strip currently? Is it one, one house per ten acres?
Yes.
And so you're saying it would now be one house per thirty acres? Okay, so substantially less dense.
Unless they did a PUD.
Unless they did a PUD.
Then you can go down to two acre minimums, but you can only do sixty-five percent of the thirty or more acre.
Right. And I think you have to have a three-quarter acre lot to do septic and well on it, uh, period, so. I mean, there's a limiter on that right there, just how many, what you could put um for infrastructure services. I, you know, Councilor Nash, I'm not going to say what's the right answer here or not, I just, I've got a saying in the architecture industry that if you have to do every, if every project has to be a PUD, then your zoning code's broken. And so I'm not going to say this is the right solution or whatever else is the right solution. I just know that attacking everything through a PUD is probably not the right approach. But I don't know what the middle ground is.
And, and just a, a quick question, the, the, the rule of, and I don't know if it's a rule of thumb or it's DEQ, that a three-quarter acre lot for a well and a septic tank for a single family, is that, is that our rule? Okay, I was just trying to make sure, I never heard that, I get, I understand why, I just didn't know whose that was.
Got to have enough area for the leach field so it doesn't get into the well water.
Or the next guy's yard.
Exactly.
So is that to suggest that we should make it easier for uh, for that to be developed?
Not necessarily.
Because that's what you're suggesting.
I'm su- I'm suggesting that the one house per thirty acres is a lot more restrictive than what is currently in place.
No, I like that part. It's all the language around uh the encouragement of development incrementally, anticipating development, uh.
Yeah, that, I'd have to dig down on that to see what the language actually says, but I mean, I think there's reason to have some pause, for sure.
Councilman?
Since we're, we're discussing housing and this has gotten, gotten to be very technical and the Chair of the Housing Subcommittee let Charlie make the presentation, but we spent a tremendous amount of time talking about this very issue on how to protect this. So, right now, all of this can be developed in one house per ten acres. If you set a lift station right here, which is exactly where it's shown on the wastewater plan, someone could come in here and say, hey, I, I want to build a ha- a neighborhood like Brookhaven. Brookhaven is like one-third of an acre, you know, um, not close to three-quarters of an acre. So uh, some of those are even smaller, uh, maybe, you know, ten thousand square foot lots. So you, you could come in and you'd say, hey, I want to do this because sanitary sewer is there and there's municipal water across the street and I just want to extend it. That's been our historical pattern. But because it's an urban reserve, it says not in the life of this plan. Even if you bring it in as a PUD, it would totally not be following this plan. The way it is described, you can come in here and do one lot on thirty acres and you would need to set aside all of the rest of the land to later take advantage of the fact that there are municipal services out here. So what we're trying to prevent is to have a run on all of this land out here being cut up into ten acre tracks. There's a long history of all of this land out here being cut up into ten acre tracks. And way back when we did this in two thousand and four, I didn't miss a meeting. I was in every meeting on the current comp plan. The theory was, oh, someday all those ten acre tracks will get redeveloped into urban housing with sewer and water. That is true in Seattle, Washington, where twenty years ago land was selling for six hundred thousand dollars an acre. It's way higher than that now. You can afford to come back in, buy somebody's ten acre ranchette and cut it up and redevelop it for urban density. We've never seen that happen in central Oklahoma, other than like Nichols Hills, you know, like some, some of the most expensive real estate in all of the Oklahoma City metro. So the idea was to try and prevent all of this from getting cut up. There's a timing factor. If we approve this plan today and we say, hey, let's go start building this lift station to open all of this up for sanitary sewer, by the time you acquire, our current lift stations here and it's got to be moved and all the rights away, it's six years from now. Literally aren't going to be able to add any for-sale, single-family detached homes anytime in the near future. And so as that demand gets really pressed upon in Norman, there's going to be a significant housing shortage on for-sale homes until these lift stations get built and begin to open this land up. And as a result of that, people are going to be coming in going, hey, I, I, I've got a hundred and sixty acres, I want to cut it up into sixteen homesites. And we're trying to prevent that from happening because those are really toxic to the environment because they deforest them, everybody starts going fescue under the trees. Yeah, I mean, you create a sterile environment and you end up with lots more pollution from those kinds of large lot developments into this fragile watershed. All of those discussions, I mean, you would not believe how many in-depth detailed discussions. And we finally landed on this and it's important to have that component in there that talks about eventually being able to do development that doesn't have septic tanks because those are another contributing factor into the, the water quality. I don't know if I've answered enough of your questions and I'd be more than happy to talk about it in as much depth as you want, but the, the, Marty brought this idea to us of like the thirty acre minimum lot where you do it in such a way that you, you literally leave the balance of land so that it later could be developed in, call it a civilized way, uh, meeting all these new standards that we're talking about for water quality improvement, green infrastructure, all of those, none of which are available now. It's going to take us a few years to overhaul our, our zoning code and our, our development standards and our engineering design criteria. We don't, we don't have much that we can follow, is one of the reasons we have to do so many PUDs is because green infrastructure is essentially really hard to do.
Uh, so I want to re-reference uh the Trojan horse. Spending a lot of time talking about the part that we agree on, not a lot of time talking about the part that we don't agree on, right? What we don't agree on is the language that uh about development in that area. What we do agree on is that it should be preserved and so if that's the intent, then that should be the intent. So, so I guess there's no argument to taking out the language about encouragement in the next twenty, twenty sixty-five plan?
It's not, it's not a Trojan horse, it, I mean, maybe it is. It's saying that, you know, if you have an, an eighty acre piece that you've got to bring in uh, you can't just show it cut up into eight, ten acre squares. Those are everywhere out there. I mean, it's amazing how many eighty acre tracks would cut up into ten acre tracks. If you do that, the, now, now we're pushing all the way to the lake boundary. We're, you know, twenty years from now, twenty-five years from now, talking about developing out here. It, it's saying, if you want to do a thirty acre track, you've got to come in and show us that I'm going to build my house on this thirty acres and the balance of this fifty acres is going to have a future development like so that when, you know, s- the sanitary sewer gets extended up this creek, you can hook on and actually develop that. And, and if the community twenty-five years from now or twenty years from now decides to update this, then, you know, they can decide, no, we're not doing it, it's all thirty acres and we're just going to leave it like that. But that's the, that's the spirit of that language, of being able to show the incremental development later and, and preventing it from getting cut up into tracks that will never get redeveloped or reused. So, the average homesite across this nation is like the, the one acre track. When we look at what really causes sprawl, it's not the four unit to the acre kind of density that's mostly in this plan. And this plan is looking at lots of stuff that's much greater density than that, trying to take the pressure off to, of, of migration out east, that.
So one per thirty acres, that's, that should stay.
Yeah, so just, just to clarify, um, it does not, in nowhere do we reference that this the areas to be encouraged to be developed even after the life of this plan. So that's, that's not in there now, so just to, to clarify that piece and then I brought up, so the description and context under the land use, areas generally in agricultural use and, and likely to experience limited development during the life of this plan. These areas consist of natural vegetation and wildlife habitat. Commercial uses are inappropriate, exclusive of small-scale services where appropriate to support the surrounding community and small businesses using accessory structures associated with the primary residence. So the, the person who's running their, you know, cabinet-making business out of their home that's there now, kind of thing and saying that that use continues. So that's kind of, that's the description that we have in the text of this area today.
So all the language about future growth, anticipating future growth, um, projecting what may or may not happen in the next land use plan, all that's gone.
It's not in the urban reserve, correct. Um, and let me, let me go to one other area just to make sure that, when that, in that description. So, um, yeah, urban reserve, the areas extended out to approximately Seventy Second Avenue East and represent the likely limit of Norman's future urban development in the life of this plan. Acreage subdivisions would compromise the fees, am I right? Feasibility of future urban services would compromise the feasibility, so that's why we're trying to discourage those acreage developments. Oh, avoid, okay, thank you, I do. Okay, avoid development of these areas during the life of this plan if necessary, designed in such a way as not to inhibit the ability to provide city water and, and wastewater services in the future. So that's where we're trying to discourage that development today that can inhibit that in the future.
But I think it's, you were saying that we're acknowledging if necessary, so I think.
We can take both of those out because the best thing that's going to discourage inappropriate growth, like huge neighborhoods out there in the middle of nowhere would be the council that. would be the council that they have to get approval from. They can then make, make a decision based on the situation at the time.
So that's in, yes, so there are some things in the character area then for the twenty-fourty-five reserve that we can also look at, which is separate. That's the character area piece, so we were kind of talking about the urban reserve. So, the twenty-fourty-five character area has a new development in this area should be done with sensitivity and only when the city services are available to adequately serve this future uses. So again, this is the idea that we're trying to say, don't develop in this area.
We can take that out.
Okay.
And the intent is still preserved there, right?
Yeah, I think, I mean, again, we can take this back to the committee tomorrow night, these couple of edits and, and share with them.
Whether or not you have language that describes city connections moving eastward, it still designates it for a certain sparsity that there's no need for that, for that kind of specification. It just ends up turning into a Trojan horse. And when this is the one and only defense that we have against inappropriate growth and development in the city to preserve what was designed by a committee of Normanites, how they envisioned our city should grow and evolve, people that want to do the kinds of developments that we're trying to protect against are the kind of people that are going to try to find loopholes and ways around it. And clinging on to little language like that is going to turn it into a Trojan horse. It's going to make this ineffective as our one and only defense against, against that kind of thing.
So, was there any analysis of, in the last twenty years, how many square miles has Norman developed in the last twenty years? And how many miles of streets have we widened to accommodate that growth? I know that in the last twenty years, we've widened Twenty-Fourth Avenue, for example, three miles of it from Highway Nine to Robinson. And we have a voter-approved bond to widen it from Rock Creek Road to Tecumseh Road. But we don't have any plans or bonds or anything to widen Forty-Eighth or Thirty-Sixth. So I was just wondering, like, in this plan over the next twenty years, if we're making better use of our existing urban footprint and we're allowing or promoting more density and more, what I would call traditional development pattern in our, in any new greenfield development that does happen, I would guess ideally we would develop probably less square miles of urbanization in the next twenty years than we did in the last twenty years, which is all based off of our old nineteen-fifties zoning and everything's separate and low-density. So, I guess theoretically, I'm thinking, if we're making better use, if we're promoting higher densities, then we're, we should be developing fewer square miles of urban city footprint over the next twenty years than we have the last twenty years. I don't know, is that in track with, with you?
Yes, I, I think that was, that was absolutely something that we heard from the community, from our committees. How do we develop in a different way so that we can slow that progress of, of development? And use all of our infrastructure more efficiently and you, that you just described. So that's, that's exactly what we heard from the community and, and we definitely looked at ways that, you know, throughout this too, we kind of put in, here's the bottom of kind of the density range and the product types that, that we want in these areas.
And, I mean, I wouldn't foresee in the next fifty years, Norman being able to widen roads further past Thirty-Sixth or Forty-Eighth or even, I wouldn't even foresee us being able to widen Thirty-Sixth or Forty-Eighth in the next fifty years for, you know, what we're doing. So, I don't see city infrastructure being able to get out there in maybe our lifetimes, under current circumstances unless something drastic changes where we see some rapid growth period like DFW cities have, something like that. But, so I, you know, I was just wondering about analysis of infrastructure. How much have we built? How much have we spent building that, building that infrastructure the last twenty years? And if, yeah, if we're making better use of our land for the next twenty years, how does that work to protect and preserve more of our land, I guess?
Councilmember Holman, that thought of infrastructure built by the city versus infrastructure that the development community was required to install. If you want to build there, you got to bring a sewer line out there, you got to bring a water line out there. And that just adds to the cost of you attempting to develop your next footprint. So, I know we know because we've connected to all that sewer infrastructure and water infrastructure as it's been built. But in that analysis, yeah, there'll be, we can show what city paid for and we can show what was paid for by the developers before they get it inspected and handed over to us to operate and maintain.
But even if it's handed over to us, then we've got a maintenance thing. And that starts to get, from what I understand, we're getting ungainly. We're at a point where we're, we're good now, but if we kept on going, it would be ungainly. We wouldn't be able to make that work as well unless we build our plans.
Well, you, yeah, you'd need, you'd need the density to make it pencil out, which is kind of the whole strong towns conversation. It's urban density makes much more cost-effective infrastructure decisions than rural densities when you're talking sewer, water, curb butter in the streets.
Derek, when you're talking about the, what the developer has to pay for, that includes the arterial expenses as well. So, I mean, Councilman Holman, if you're worried about who's going to build Thirty-Sixth Street, developer's going to pay for it when he backs up to it.
The recruitment doesn't ever seem to be enough to cover the costs, or we would have done Thirty-Sixth by now.
Yes, ma'am.
So I just want to remind everybody, when we get this adopted, if anybody comes in to develop in that area, they will still have to come back to you for the rezoning. So you will, we will make those changes, and that's, I guess, the other thing. We have to go back to the steering committee because these are changes from what the steering committee has sent out, so.
And everyone's on watch.
We'll kind of need a.
Consensus nod.
What you would like to see the steering committee look at tomorrow night. But again, they're going to have to come to council for a rezoning and show you their plan within this area.
Yeah, and from the, is it April twenty-twenty-one, when the judge forces reverse the decision on, April twenty-seventeen, decision on Thirty-Sixth for being arbitrary and capricious, that it then becomes an administrative decision when it's the rezoning. And if we don't go by all the checks and the boxes, then we get sued for being arbitrary and capricious. But if it betrays the spirit of the land use plan, then we can reject it and that's valid purpose or valid reason.
There have been cases, yes, but.
But if it's a development that checks all the boxes, but it betrays the nature of the area and we reject it, then we get sued.
There's a lot of boxes on here to check other than.
The one, the one thing that I want to get rid of is just the language that describes how the area is to be developed.
Referring to the future.
Right. And, and going back to what I was saying before, it has no purpose in this. If this whole, if the point of this plan is to make this, is to provide those limitations and those barriers on what can and can't happen, then saying that we could do something in the future, but not now, it's just, it's, it's an irrational thing to put in this kind of document. I think the good sense of the council will be, if there's a future need for that area to be reused, that, obviously, if there's no hookups out there, if they're trying to put a whole bunch of, like, one or two-acre lots out there, we know that's going to be bad for the area, but then with, we can reject it. If they say that, oh, but we're close to city connections, we're willing to pay for it. Well, then we can't because it says in our plan that they can if city connections are up to it.
Councilman Nash, you're reminding me of one of the scenarios we ran through when, when we were forming this language because we were trying to come up with something that would protect the area, but that might face some real-world scenarios. So, I take it giving it a backdoor. Yeah, I, I see your point about the Trojan horse. That wasn't the intent and it's perfectly fine to listen to Cassandra and say, let's keep the horse out of the citadel. I'm all good with that. And, but here was the scenario. So, you have a twenty-acre track and there's two kids, you know, let's say Liz and I have a twenty-acre track. We give, want to give our daughters each a ten-acre homesite. That's legal in Norman, in, in currently. But if we adopt this, now we no longer can do that. And you couldn't even plat that twenty acres if you wanted to because it's not thirty, right? So we're looking at, how could you do it in a way that still made it possible? And so with, if you came in and you said, well, I'm going to do this in a PUD, I'm going to do two, two-acre tracts in this PUD and then we're going to set aside the other sixteen acres and show how that could function for future development when sewer and water come someday. That is how we got here. I, I, I don't know that that's important. I don't know how many people are going to come to us aggrieved, saying, you know, hey, I can't build or my two kids can't build on these twenty acres because there's thirty-acre minimum. That is how we got here. And, and this seemed like a complicated enough process to make somebody jump through all these hurdles to make it where it's really going to discourage this from getting developed. I don't know. I mean, if we just say, minimum lot size is thirty acres, we may end up having people come back in and say, hey, I've, I've been harmed. And so that, that was, that was, you know, where we were coming from. And, you know, if really, if this is kind of like the only objection to the adoption of the plan, it's probably, I would, I don't want to speak for the whole steering committee, but I can imagine everybody getting on board. We're tired. We've been at this now for well over a year and a half and we kind of want to wrap it up in a way that we think you guys will approve it, you know, no sense in us doing all this work if you guys aren't going to. Just wanted to share that scenario as to the why, really weren't looking for a Trojan horse.
And it's purposeful, at least it seems to me, Richard, that you all made some good decisions and basically taking that mile and a half wide strip and saying, here, this is, don't, don't think about that, think of anything you want to west.
Yeah.
But don't think about going east.
Well, and so much, so many times, you know, this is part of how I got my job. We were doing a community in Edmond, Oklahoma. Sanitary sewer was available. The Director of Public Works was instructed to, I mean, he knew that sewer was available. We knew every, everybody, I mean, he was instructed to lie in council chambers and say sewer wasn't available and he resigned over the deal. And, I mean, it was very contentious over, it wasn't even in the urban sprawl part of Edmond. But, after that, my dad never wanted to go to another city council meeting. He said, you move home and you come to do this. Great job. So, the idea was, this plan says, don't do it. But very often, you come in and you go, well, hey, there's water here, sewer here, why can't I do it? Why can't I do a plan amendment? We were trying to make it so clear, like, no, back there, stay, stay back there.
So without all that language on growth, development, incremental, they can still make that request. And it makes sense, it makes sense. Otherwise, all the language on preserving that, that one per thirty, all that's, all that's great. It's just that one part of the language that it kind of betrays its own presented purpose. Because if it's, if it's intended to protect the area, then it must protect the area. Otherwise, if we take, if we can take that language out and if people don't see the opportunity to grow out eastward, then that provides an incentive to infill and increase density in the rest of town. Otherwise, developers, a lot cleverer than Mr. McCallan are going to be trying to find ways around that.
And just a quick question for Jane. Whenever you adopt a new land use plan, something changes for some property owner. And sometimes they may feel like, well, I have more entitlements, my property is worth more now, after the plan was adopted. And some property owners may say, you have harmed me because you have reduced or restricted my current entitlements. So I may be going from, I've got twenty acres, I can give each kid ten, and now I can't. I don't know if that's grounds for a lawsuit or a challenge against the general plan amendment, just a thing to think about. The other thing we recognize is, every community that has a general plan land use map, I don't know how many times we've amended the current general plan land use map. People come in, the pressure is always going to be there. Somebody's going to come in and say, what do I need to do to amend the plan? Well, you need to go through the planning commission and talk five council members into voting yes to amend the plan. And it's on paper, they can, two councils from now, they could say, yeah, we want to go ahead and develop everything in, in the Tan. And five council members could make that happen. So, just unfortunately, land use plans are written on paper and they can be changed at a request and the will of the elected officials. So, we can provide security and we think we got it all buttoned down and, you know, an election cycle or two later and all of a sudden the development desires changed.
So I know, I'm sorry, so I know we're limited on time, we have a meeting that starts. So if we remove the language that you're referring to, I just need a consensus from council that.
Can I just, can I just suggest one thing?
Hang on one second, Marty, because I want to read this. So, in addition, we also have under the implementation, it refers to when the property or area of land subject to a land use designation amendment is found within the reserve area. And the proposed amendment would either remove the property from or amend the property to an urban reserve land use designation, the following shall apply. And bottom line, it says, they must be contiguous to urban development. Contiguous is defined as adjoining land that touches the subject property in a common corner or property line. So, as Richard was saying, the services are not out there at this point, they won't be. That's just another checkmark that we would have to make sure that the applicant is, is meeting.
Yeah, it's already baked into the, you know, islands of zoning. I guess unofficial policy, I don't know if it's official or not, but that would be creating an island of zoning, which we avoid doing already.
Marty, did you have something?
Yeah, I mean, my, my concern about not putting the reason for it in there does deal with litigation about an arbitrary standard. So, so let's say that I wanted to do a bunch of ten-acre lots in the reserve zone, in the reserve, in the reserve area. And I get denied because it's not consistent with the comprehensive plan and there's no reason for it. I could go to court and say, well, you know, wait a minute, all that green area stuff to do ten-acre lots and I'm closer to the city and you need to tell me I can't, I can't do that at the same time. That's, that's why, that's why there's, there's a reason to put the rationale in it from a, from a, a planning point of view.
I've rarely seen an unreasonable project get rejected. It's happened, but it's extremely rare.
If it's a request that makes sense, that's reasonable, I don't see it as being, I don't predict it to be rejected. Even if it were somebody who wanted to leave as an inheritance to three of their kids, all they wanna do is split the parcel on less than 30 acres. That would be hard to reject.
Yeah, no, I'm not talking about that though. I'm talking about somebody, a subdivider.
Somebody wanting to go in and make a neighborhood in an area that shouldn't have a neighborhood in it?
Right.
Okay.
In the interest of time, because we've got, we've got about four minutes left. And, and trying to give you direction and give the committee direction as to how they wanna go. We can't vote in here. It's, it's not the right format of the meeting. But is there anybody else that stands with Councilmember Nash and wants the language changed? Or do we want, that's interesting.
I think we need to take a real hard look at what the language says and if there are points of contention, they should probably be addressed.
So do you wanna bring it back again?
We, we should be getting drafts of this very soon, right? And the first, no, maybe this is a separate thing, but when it goes in front of a council for first reading, can we not have that on consent so that it can be a public, public can have an opportunity to comment on it while there's still two weeks to make decisions? But we'll get the draft and then if it's unsatisfactory, those, that can be addressed from the dais ideally, like better earlier than later, but.
Yeah, I'd hate to delay the whole process.
If, if the, if the committee recommends the plan tomorrow night, you probably have it Thursday or Friday this week.
Okay. And so we can have all of our grievances in your email box by Saturday.
We could, we could do another study session. I don't know when.
A study session would be good, but we don't have.
So in just a couple of thoughts, Jane, it goes to planning commission before it comes to council. So there's another opportunity for public input and all of these meetings have been open to the public and we've had lots of public participation. So none of this was done in a vacuum. And it was all, what you have in your hands is the public. So planning commission first, then to city council for your consideration, first reading, second reading. So even to keep it on track, there's still lots of conversation time in that runway.
Anything else from council at this time? Thank you very much for taking the time to do this, Amy.